Welcome, everyone. Tonight, we'll start off our agenda with a public hearing on proposed local laws to amend following chapters of the Village Code. We are starting with chapter seventy-six.
That's me.
Sorry.
No, it's okay. All right, these are the changes to chapter seventy-six. Changes to conform to code conventions. Renumbered sections separated prohibited acts determination into prohibited acts and determination. Added section districts defined changed permits to relief. Changed definition of daytime hours and nighttime hours. Added definition of village. Added drone to the list of powered modal vehicle. Is this supposed to be?
Excuse me. Could you sign in, please, and if you wish to speak, sign in.
Model. There you go. Okay. Grammar changes, gender neutral. Zones replaced by districts. Seventy-six dash five reformatted to tables. Seventy-six dash seven changed to reflect new daytime and nighttime hours. Seventy-six dash nine changed to remove industrial zones and replaced with business districts. Modifications to seventy-six dash ten, previously permits now relief. Included changes from permit to relief. Change from fire inspector to code enforcement officer. Seventy-six dash eleven C parentheses two added digital audio player. Deleted replacement schedule within a specific timeframe for sanitary, I'm sorry, for stationary machinery, equipment, air conditioners, and fans. Deleted noise sensitive quiet zones. Deleted exemption of sound level limits for domestic power tools, lawn mowers, and agricultural equipment. Added exemption of sound level limits for sporting events and events sponsored by local school district in celebration of the student athletes, that student athletes' achievements, excuse me. Emergency construction as determined by the code enforcement officer. Emergency activities required by the village. Added violations prosecuted by the code enforcement officer or the village police department. Added the village board is empowered to seek injunctive relief against any person or business in addition to any other penalties.
Could the gentleman who just arrived sign the sign-in form, please?
That would be Mr. Martin.
It is Mr. Martin.
Hello?
And if you plan to speak, sign the other form as well. Thank you.
Next is chapter one oh four. What's that?
We open for comments.
Yes, probably so.
Could do that. Yeah, I think that's how we did it last time. Thank you. Are there any comments on chapter seventy-six noise? Yes, sir. State your name and.
Shall I stay here?
Yeah, it's fine. I guess if you're all right.
Yeah, just speak up.
Yeah, if you can speak up.
So, I'm Stephen Rose, homeowner.
Do you have an address, please? Address, please.
Seven Marion.
Thank you.
I'm concerned about leaf blowers. There's a lot of people at home now, more than ever, working at home. We have, a side issue is that we're very concerned about respiratory illnesses. And we have, it seems to me like there's an increase in this use of gas leaf blowers, which have at least eighty to eighty-plus decibels sound levels, which are, you know, it's an extremely high level. And health authorities have stated that levels of, levels at that level and above are dangerous to human health. From my personal experience, being at home more, I can't think when there's gas leaf blowers running around the neighborhood. And I'm more than the fifty feet that we talked about. I think the rate is, I think all, all these leaf blowers are rated at fifty feet. And I'm more, and I can't think. They're extremely, and I have to, I have to say, from my unscientific observations, that the village, the village itself has the loudest leaf blowers. Being used for street cleaning, I don't know, anyone, I've been around, I'm a septuagenarian. I've been involved in landscape work all, all my life, not as a profession. But there's a lot of ways to remove things without using a gas-powered leaf blower. It's, it's, to me, it's, there's a level of rudeness here being put upon the population, not to mention health issues. The sleepy hollow mayor last year stated that particulate mad air kicked up by a leaf blower is extremely, it lasts in the air for hours afterwards. And it could, can contain things like heavy metals, animal feces, you know, various types of dust, pollen. You know, you hear people's, you know, there's hearsay that viruses can be included, that's not. I don't think there's a scientific proof of that. But you know, you're creating an atmosphere of, of dirt, besides the noise levels, which are the above, you know, above healthy levels. I've seen the guy from the village who you, who often uses it, he's only wearing eardrums, he's only wearing earbuds, which I'm sure isn't really blocking that noise. So, and I feel the village should be provided, at least, if we, if we don't do something about these leaf blowers, at least provide the, the village worker with, with proper I suppose, I suppose that covers it. Oh, one thing, one thing I discovered today was that when we're talking about decibel levels, is if we go from like seventy to eighty, or eighty to ninety, that sounds like a, like twenty percent, or seventeen percent, or something, or less, fifteen percent. That's not true. Decibel levels are, are not a linear, the decibel scale is not linear.
They're logarithmic.
So you know this, yeah?
Yes.
So, an increase in ten decibels is really a doubling.
It's actually.
It's really a doubling of, it's a doubling of how it sounds to us. It's ten times what they call sound intensity. The, the human ear hears it as a doubling, ten, ten decibels. Today, we can, there are gas battery-powered leaf blowers in the fifty-five to sixty-five range. Now, it's healthier, I still don't, I still don't condone the, the kicking up of the dust, but at least we can, we, we could get the level down to something below unhealthy levels. Because the, the gas blowers are eighty, you know, eighty-plus. And, and the two-stroke engines are, are, are the worst. I'm not sure who has what. But, you know, the four-stroke are already, four-stroke are already in a dangerous situation. Two-stroke are even louder. I guess that covers it. I just feel like I'm assaulted. This, it's been used year-round. I see them being used for removing a dusting of snow. Let's get, you know, it's like, we, we, I'm sure it makes people feel more like Rambo than, than a janitor. You know, it's like, it gives people a greater sense of power to be using a, a power tool with, that's, you know, super powerful, but, you know, really. And we can, I think everyone can humble themselves and do things that aren't so assaulted to the community. Thank you.
I think we have your point made. Thank you. Donald, did you?
Donald McDonald, Ken Beach Street, just to chime in on what Mr. Rose is saying. In my neighborhood, Friday morning, one crew comes in and they do a number of lawns in the neighborhood, and for the next forty-five minutes to an hour, they own the acoustical space of the neighborhood. Would I call it catastrophe? No. Would I call it a major annoyance for an hour? Absolutely. Whether that could be dealt with, with the code, or with regulation, I honestly don't know. But I would say that I would identify it as a, a major annoyance problem, which if it could be solved somehow, that would be great.
So, the code currently states the maximum noise level, the daytime hours in a residential district is sixty. So when you encounter that, my recommendation would be to call the police.
But you're, I couldn't hear, Marie, you said six.
Six zero.
Six zero decibels.
Yes.
But the problem is that I don't have a decibel meter. I mean, how do you?
The police do.
What?
The police.
So you call the police and you have them come out with their gun and they do it?
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
So the limit is in residential mixed-use areas, daytime maximum in decibels is fifty-five, business sixty, parks and recreation forty. This is on page five. So, my recommendation, so, so let me ask.
I hear you. Please.
If you want something done, I think the code is addressing the level. So I think what needs to be done is action when it occurs to call the police, to measure the noise and issue, issue whatever it is they issue when the noise levels exceed the maximum permitted.
What about the village itself?
What about the village itself? It's such a craze.
She's saying it's okay to call the cops on the village.
I would say.
From my experience, the village is the loudest of all. It seems like the village could test its own equipment. Also, under F-two, am I, am I speaking out of turn?
No, go ahead.
Okay, under F-two, it says, power equipment of five horsepower or less can go to seventy-five decibels.
So, Stephen, which F?
It's called power equipment.
Power equipment, okay. So it's seventy-six, seventy-six eleven F.
Oh, that's, oh, okay. It's eleven. There's, there's, it appears to be there are exceptions for power equipment under that eleven F-two.
So what it says is, so F-two, during daytime hours, which are seven AM to nine PM on weekdays, power equipment rated five horsepower or less shall not exceed a sound level of seventy-five decibels at a distance of fifty feet. Power equipment rated more than five horsepower shall not exceed a sound level of eighty-two decibels at a distance of fifty feet. If your recommendation is to make some changes to those numbers, I'd be very interested in what you would recommend.
Drop it.
Sorry?
Drop eleven F-two.
Okay, so we, I, we're here for this public hearing. We can't get into the decibels, and then we're going to start talking about minute, well, first of all, it's fifty feet, and you know, I'm, I'm, I wouldn't be able to tell what a decibel was from fifty feet, and whether it's being in fraction or not. So, I think the point is that you believe it's leaf blowing, and it seems like the village in particular, meaning our, our workers, are, shouldn't be using gas-powered mower, powered leaf blowers, and kicking up dust and the noise. And I think Donald's is also the time in which people are using them and the disturbance it causes. So I think we can move on from that. And when we review the remarks that have been made, or comments have been made, we can look at the chapter at that point and see if it's being addressed or not, or what we can do, or if we feel that it should be lowered, or how we feel we can address that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sean, could you sign in?
Sure.
And if you wish to speak, could you also sign the second form, the two forms there?
Moving along, chapter one oh four signs and. Sorry, just a quick, quick follow-on comments if I can.
What's that?
Could I make a quick follow-on?
Oh, sure.
Yeah. Michael Reisman, thirty, Fox Street. Just, and I apologize if this was already covered, but just, you know, to the extent that exemption for domestic power tools, lawn mowers, and agricultural equipment is being deleted, that should perhaps also explicitly include leaf blowers. So in other words, there's no exemption for leaf blowers from requirements. Now, maybe that's already obvious, but it's, it's just if you're going to take lawn mowers out of the exemption, it should be clear that, that leaf blowers are, I suppose, currently not exempt and continue to not be exempt. And just the other, just point I would make is, and maybe this, you know, again, it's not something that would be embedded in the code, but, you know, there's, and you could say this about a lot of provisions, but there's, there's an opportunity, perhaps for the public, for education on the part of the village, in terms of changes to, in particular, for an issue like this, noise restrictions, that people may not be aware, landscaping companies may not be aware of these restrictions. Now, maybe they should know, they should be aware, but, you know, that, that's, I think, something to consider for the village board, if it's, if it's appropriate to future that, when these changes are made, that, you know, again, it's probably not limited just to this, noise restrictions, but in particular, things that are, you know, systemic problem, you know, repeated problems over time could be perhaps addressed preemptively by some education.
Thank you. Anything else on noise? Okay, chapter one oh four signs and placards, sorry.
Okay, description of changes to chapter one oh four signs and placards. The proposed version has been significantly expanded to include multiple new sections, including purpose, overall objective, definitions, temporary signs, exempt signs, non-conforming signs, enforcement, severability, and sections dealing with signs in various zoning districts. Updated general references. Chapter has been made gender neutral. Changes to conform to code chapter conventions, and we renumbered one oh four dash three penalties for offenses to one oh four dash eleven, with that section down.
Anything from the public for, for chapter one oh four? Okay. We will go ahead then to chapter one eleven subdivision of land. I guess I have the first, first page here. Description of changes to chapter one eleven subdivision of land, changes to conform to code chapter conventions, updated general references, chapter has been made gender neutral, updated references to New York State Village Law, changed references from master plan to comprehensive plan, updated planning board policy and regulations to remove statements from the initial introduction of the chapter, added definitions for boundary line change, comprehensive plan, lot, re-subdivision, street right-of-way, village, village attorney, village engineer, removed definitions of master or comprehensive plan, updated definition of subdivision plot or final plot, street, changed references from building inspector to code enforcement officer, from secretary of planning board to village clerk throughout, were appropriate, changed required number of copies and digital copies of materials throughout to a lesser number, added boundary line change and all required action for boundary line changes throughout the chapter, added references to chapter fifty-seven reimbursement of professional consultants' fees throughout chapter as appropriate, changed reference to village inspector to village engineer throughout chapter as appropriate, changed one eleven dash three and one eleven dash four to remove units or uses, renamed one eleven dash five to final approval of minor subdivision, changed timeframe from public hearing, changed required notifications to property owners and timeframe for doing so, changed timeframe for planning board action, added additional approval, added actions associated with conditional approval, changed chapter eleven dash sixteen from preliminary plat for major subdivision to specify that waiver must be authorized and granted, all requirements for minor subdivision submission must also be met, changed requirements to recommendations and objectives of the comprehensive plan, added preliminary public hearing, changed timeframe and conditions for conditional approval, changed eleven dash seven plat for major subdivisions to add hardship conditions, added village of coal from water and wastewater department in New York State Department of Environmental Conservation approvals, changed requirements from Article nine A of real, real property law covering subdivided lands to, if subject to State Department of Transportation, County Highway Department, or Village Highway Department. While the filing requirements to these organizations remain the same, changed the timeframe of the public hearing, changed required notification to property owners and timeframe for doing so, added a waiver for conducting public hearing, changed the timeframe on actions and conditions associated with a proposed subdivision plat, added conditional approval of the final plat, added plat void if revised after approval and conditions associated with this action, deleted planning board meeting with, with the planning board.
Okay, continuing on with chapter one eleven, renewed one eleven dash eight to performance bond or other equivalent security, added or others equivalent security where appropriate, changed approved to accepted, changed with consent of the village board to, after consultation with the village engineer where appropriate, changed conditions for decreased slash increased slash new performance bond, renumbered one eleven ten to one eleven nine, public streets, recreation areas, change may require to will require of written agreement, renumbered one eleven, one eleven dash eleven to one eleven ten, maintenance bond improvements, added other security, changed three years to two years, added village engineer shall determine amount, not exceed twenty percent, changed consent of village board to consultation with village engineer, identified village engineer or others as, as alternate inspector where appropriate, renumber, renumbered one eleven dash twelve to one eleven eleven, minimum standards waiver, changed shell to pen, renumbered one eleven thirteen to one eleven twelve, general considerations, changed section reference numbers from one eleven dash thirteen through one eleven dash twenty-two, renumbered one eleven dash fourteen to one eleven thirteen, street layout, added all streets shall have sidewalks on both sides, added, added dead ends, dead end streets and loops are discouraged, added conditions for dead end streets, deleted footpath from block size, renumbered one eleven dash fifteen to one eleven dash fourteen, street design, added fire hydrant approval by village water department, added reference to chapter eighty-one, which is outdoor lighting standards, added electric utilities to the underground, deleted reference to sketch, renumbered one eleven dash sixteen to one eleven fifteen, street names, renumbered one eleven seventeen to one eleven sixteen, lots, added reference to chapter one oh six, steep slopes and to, and to New York State Village Law, renumbered one eleven dash eighteen to one eleven seventeen, drainage improvement, changed from ten-year storm to twenty-five-year storm, changed flooding determined by planning board to federal emergency management agency, added reference to chapter fifty-two flood plan management, renumbered one eleven dash nineteen to one eleven eighteen, parks, open spaces, spaces and natural features, deleted section on recreation areas, changed tree specifications, removed advice and consent of the village board, added specimen tray, renumbered one eleven dash twenty to one eleven nineteen, sketch plan.
And wrapping up subdivision of land? Sorry, I have.
No, you do, you do. Sorry.
Renumbered one eleven dash twenty-one to one eleven twenty, minor subdivision plat, added all the requirements of a sketch plan, referenced one eleven sixteen F for monuments and lot corner markers, added contours, proposed grades and first floor elevations, added requirements for meeting specifications of the New York State DEC, village of cold spring water and wastewater, changed from north to true north, added meets and bounds of proposed lot lines, easements, areas of dedication, tax lot IDs, location map, seeker environmental assessment form, renumbered one eleven dash twenty-two to one eleven twenty-one, major subdivision preliminary plat and data, added meets and bounds of proposed lot lines, areas of dedication, tax lot IDs, location map, changed tree specifications, seeker environmental assessment form, added requirements for sanitation and water supply lines, excuse me, water supply facilities, changed contour intervals, added requirements for location and size of all proposed water lines, valves, hydrants and sewer line, sewer lines and fire alarm boxes, connection to existing lines or alternate means of water supply or sewage disposal and treatment, added storm drainage plan, subject to review of village of cold spring water and wastewater department, added conformance to chapter eighty-one, which is outdoor lighting standards, added a zoning table requirement, added to survey lot corner markers and first floor elevation of existing buildings, renumbered one eleven dash twenty-three to one eleven dash twenty-two, major subdivision final plat and data, changed from north to true north, renamed Article six from variances and waivers to waivers and appeals, renumbered one eleven dash twenty-four to one eleven dash twenty-three, waiver requirements, paragraph substantially rewritten, numbered one eleven dash twenty-five to one eleven dash twenty-four imposition of conditions, new one eleven dash twenty-five appeals, renamed Article seven from fees to administration and enforcement, one eleven dash twenty-six consultants' fees, added that fees are due at time of submission of application, added one eleven dash twenty-seven conflicts, one eleven dash twenty-eight designation of enforcement official, and one eleven twenty-nine penalties.
Okay. Do you want to run the show? Okay. Do you have any comments on one ele, on chapter one eleven subdivision of land?
Could the person who just came in sign the sign-in sheet, and if you plan to speak, sign, put your name on that one as well.
Hi, Ellen.
Okay, so moving along, no comments on that. We go to chapter one twenty-four, unsafe buildings, a new chapter.
Okay. This is a new chapter. Unsafe buildings pose a threat to life and property in the village of Cold Spring. Buildings and structures may become unsafe by reason of damage by fire, damage, age of general deterioration. Vacant buildings not properly secured and doorways and windows also serve as an attractive nuisance for young children who may be injured therein, as well as point of congregation by vagrants and transients. A dilapidated building may also serve as a place of rodent infestation, thereby creating a health menace to the community. Debris, rubble, or parts of buildings left on the ground and not removed constitute a dangerous, unhealthy, and unsightly condition. It is purpose of this chapter to provide for the safety, health, protection, and general welfare of persons and property in the village of Cold Spring by requiring such unsafe buildings to be repaired or demolished and removed.
Okay, Sean, any comments on that? Okay.
I do have a comment.
Yes.
Does that include vacant, John Morton, Sixth Street Street, does that include vacant buildings as well?
Excuse me, I can't.
Does that include vacant buildings, like vacant and, you know, unoccupied, but not necessarily totally closed?
Yeah. Yes, they do. Okay. The meat and potatoes of tonight, chapter one thirty-four, zoning.
Can you read the comments first? You want to go right into the chapter? Go right into the chapter.
We'll go into the chapter and I'll read the comments. We'll go into the chapter and I'll read the comments after, when we take the public comment.
Okay, everyone hang in there. This is a long one. Chapter 134 zoning, page 1. Significant changes have been made to Chapter 134. It is recommended that it be read in its entirety. Major changes include: Chapter 134, the zoning map and the table of dimensional requirements implement the deletion of two zoning districts, I-1 and I-2, and the addition of four new districts, B-5, which is a railroad district, MU-1, which is mixed use, and PR-1, parks and recreation. Scenic viewshed overlay, which is the last part. It adds the scenic viewshed overlay district, which encompasses the entire village. Eliminates references to special permits and assigns to the planning board the ability to issue special use permits. Standards and regulations of fences have been moved to Chapter 42, fences and walls. Standards and regulations of lighting have been moved to Chapter 108, outdoor lighting standards. It adds landscaping within and around parking lots. It adds regulations for accessory apartments. The description of changes to Chapter 134. The chapter has been made gender neutral. Changes to conform to code chapter conventions. General references have been updated. Grammar and punctuation corrections. Changed from building inspector to code enforcement officer throughout. Changed from Board of Appeals to Zoning Board of Appeals where appropriate throughout. Reference to the master fee schedule throughout as appropriate. References to New York State Village Law have been corrected throughout. References to special use permits are approved by the planning board throughout. Added to all districts requirement to conform to applicable requirements of 134-14 Scenic Viewshed Overlay District. Deleted the following districts and all references to them. I-1 Light Industry District. I-2 Heavy Industry District. Designated Hotel Historic Recreation District. 134-18E Supplemental Parking Regulations was renumbered to 134-17M, and all references have been changed throughout. 134-1 Purpose Added Parks, Recreation, and Mixed Use and Deleted Industry.
Passing the baton. 134-2 Definition. Deleted the phrase, "The word, person includes a corporation" in the introductory paragraph. Modified building allowed in accessory use. Modified definition of bed and breakfast building, accessory building, and added accessory structure to the definition. Modified building height of convenience store, coverage, lot, dwelling, family, floor area of building, and renamed to floor area gross. Modified definition of home occupation, hospital, hotel, house, trailer, junkyard. Changed lingerie to lingerie mat. Modified definition of lot line width of mobile home, open space, retail business, sanatorium, story half, yard, front yard, front and yard rear. 134-2 in definitions. Added accessory apartment, basement, camper or camper trailer, code enforcement officer, coffee shop, commercial amusement, demolition, demolition at emergency, electric vehicle charging station, fence, floor area, net, home professional office, independent living facility, live-work unit, lot line front, lot line rear, luncheonette, mixed use, open space protected, personal service shop, professional office services, wholesale sales. 134-2 Definitions. Deleted motel, cellar, dog kennel, tourist home, and trailer camp. 134-3 Listing of districts. Added B-5 Railroad, MU-1 Mixed Use 1, PR-1 Parks and Recreation. Deleted I-1 Light Industry. I-2 Heavy Industry. Designated Hotel District Recreational. 134-4 Updated Date of Zoning Map. 134-6B-3 Modified from Lot Area to Lot Coverage Area. 134-6E Added: Any use not permitted by this chapter shall be deemed prohibited. 134-7 Regulations for R-1 One Family Residence District. 134-7A-5 Modified to Home Occupations as per Section 134-116G-G4 and accessory uses as defined in Article 2, 134-2B. 134-7A-7 and 8 Added: One accessory apartment permitted and home professional office permitted. 134-7 Hospital Medical Centers, Sanatorium, Nursing, Convalescent Home, Philanthropic, and what is that?
Comms Center.
Okay, she said that. Institutions no longer allowed in R-1 District. Marinas no longer allowed in R-1 District. One accessory apartment no longer requires special use permit. Now is it right? 134-7C-4 Front Yard Setback Can Be Modified Without Special Use Permit. 7 Livable Floor Area Changed to Net Floor Area. Added 10 Added: In computing the front yard setback, the presence of entries and porticos shall be ignored. See 134-17D-2. 134-7E Replaced 134-18 with 134-42. 134-7F Expanded Requirements For Required Site Plan Review and Approval by Planning Board in the Case of Any Building Proposed in R-1 District and with any change of use in R-1 District.
Continuing 134. 134-8 Changed the title from Regulations for R-3 Multi-Family Residence Districts to Regulations for R-3 Multiple Family Residence Districts. 134-8A Deleted Tourist Homes and Membership Clubs and Lodges. 134-8B Changed 134-8B-1 to add, with the exception of accessory apartments, accessory apartments are not permitted in an R-3 District. Added to 134-8B-2 Bed and Breakfast. 134-8C Changed 9 for the livable floor area to net floor area. Added in 11. In computing the front yard setback, the presence of entries and porticos shall be ignored. See 134-17D-2. Added 12 Exceptions to front yard setbacks. See 134-17D-3. And 134-8P-3 was rewritten. 134-9 Which are the Regulations for B-1 General Business Districts. 134-9 Subsections Renumbered. 134-9 Removed the Description of the Parcels Comprising the B-1 District and Removed Appendix D, which had the listing of those parcels. 134-9 Description of Site Plan and Approval Rewritten. 134-9B Added: Professional Offices/Services. Modified Wholesale Sales. Deleted Motels, Boarding Houses, Rooming Houses, Tourist Homes, Newspaper and Job Printing, Car Sales, Franchise Dealers Only. 134-9B-8 Changed to Refer to Chapter 104. 134-9B-10 Added: Conversion of a First Floor Commercial, Professional, or Retail Space to Residential Use is prohibited. In addition, existing first floor storefront glass areas cannot be reduced during any renovation or use change or change from residential to commercial or retail use. 134-9C Deleted: Public Garages and Filling Stations. Added: Marinas for the Docking of Pleasure Boats, together with restaurant facilities, to be used in connection with the marina. All such uses shall have toilet facilities connected to the municipal sewer system. No such use, however, shall be established or permitted on a parcel of land less than 160,000 square feet in area, with a minimum frontage of the Hudson River of 200 feet. Moved existing setback from special use permit to minimum required specifications. 134-9D-4 Front Yard Setback Changed to Zero Feet for B-1 Lots on Main Street. 134-9E Removed supplementary sign requirements and referred to Chapter 81, Outdoor Lighting Standards. Removed Uses Requiring or Utilizing a Lot Area in Excess of 5,000 Square Feet. 134-9F Added: Both Storage of Any Kind, including lumberyard, warehouses, oil and gas storage, junkyard, or similar uses.
134-10 Regulations for B-2 Designated Shopping Center Districts. 134-10A Rewritten to Include Alteration or Conversion. Delete Special Use Permit. Delete Subdivision. 134-10B Changed to Refer Signs to Chapter 104 and with approval of the planning board. Deleted Bowling Alley's, Public Garages and Filling Stations, manufacture, assembly, or treatment, which is clearly incidental to a retail business or service conducted on the premises. 134-10C Changed Uses Under Special Permit to Uses Under Special Use Permit. Removed All Applications for Building Permits Shall be referred to the planning board as set forth above. 134-10F-1 Changed Entrances and Exit Driveways Shall be Identified on the Site Plan. 134-10F-3 Deleted according to the plan approved by the planning board. 134-10F-4 Deleted Any Lot Line of Which Lies Added From That Residence District. Changed to Refer to Chapter 81. 134-10F-5 Changed to Refer to Chapter 104, Signs and Placards. 134-10F-6 Added: Conversion of a First Floor Commercial, Professional, or Retail Space to Residential Use is prohibited. In addition, existing storefront glass areas cannot be reduced during any renovation, use change, or change from residential to commercial or retail use. 134-10G-4 Added Accessory Apartments. 134-11 Regulations for B-3 Designated Retail Financial Professional Districts. 134-11A Rewritten to Include or Alteration or Conversion. Delete Special Use Permit. 134-11B-2 Changed from Community to Commercial. 134-11B-3 Changed from Businesses and Professional Offices to Professional Offices/Services. 134-11B-4, 5, and 6 Added Single Family Residences, Restaurants. Changed Signs to Refer to Chapter 104. 134-11C Changed Special Use Permit. Moved Churches and similar places of worship, parish house, and schools meeting State Department of Education requirements, public libraries, and municipal buildings to 134-11B. 134-11F-1 Changed Entrances and Exit Driveways Shall be Identified on the Site Plan. 134-11F-3 Deleted according to the plan approved by the planning board. 134-114F Changed to Refer to Chapter 81. 134-11F-5 Changed to Refer to Chapter 104. And 134-11G Deleted Restaurants and Similar Service Establishments. Section 134-12 Regulations for I-1 Office Light Industry Districts Deleted in Total. Replaced with new 134-12 Regulations for MU-1 Mixed Use Districts. Section 134-13 Regulations for I-2, sorry, not I-1. I-2 Heavy Industry Districts Deleted in Total. Replaced with new 134-13 Regulations for PR-1 Parks and Recreation Districts. Section 134-14 Regulations for Designated Hotel Historic Recreational Districts Deleted. This district did not exist in the zoning map. Deleted in total. Replaced with all new 134-14 Scenic Viewshed Overlay Districts. 134-15 Regulations for B-4 Designated Medical and Healthcare Facility Districts. 134-15A Rewritten to Include an Alteration or Conversion. 134-15B-1 Added with exception of accessory apartments which are not permitted in a B-4 District. 134-15B-4 Deleted Medical Center. 134-15F-1 Changed to Entrances and Exit Driveways Shall be Identified. 134-15F-3 Deleted according to the plan approved by the planning board. 134-15G New Subsection Added. 134-15A Regulations for B-4A Medical Healthcare Facility Mixed Use Districts. 134-15AA Rewritten to Delete Buildings Used to Include a Building or Alteration or Conversion or Mixed Use Development to Delete Uses to Delete 134-4 and Standards Required for Special Use Permits under 134-16BE, with the planning board having sole authority to apply appropriate standards and safeguards in accordance with 134-16E Section 4, and additional standards under 134-16G for senior citizen housing in the B-4-A District. Added reference in 134 via footnote. 134-15AB-1 Added accessory apartments are not permitted in the 15A District. 134-15AB-4 Significant Rewriting Including merger of previous 134-15AB-4 and 134-16G as it applied to senior citizen housing. 134-15AC-2 Added accessory apartments as prohibited use. 134-15AD-10 Changed floor area to net floor area. 134-15AF-1 Changed entrances and exit driveways shall be identified. 134-15AF-3 Deleted according to the plan approved by the planning board. 134-15AF-5 Changed 134-18 to 134-14. 134-15A-7, 8, and 9 Renumbered to 134-15A-6, 7, and 8. New 134-15A-6 Deleted. Where parking is sufficient for existing uses as of the date of this amendment, no additional parking shall be required for said use, however such parking shall not be decreased. 134-15A-9 through 18 Added from 134-16G, 134-15A-10 Modified to Refer to Chapter 81 After Lighting.
We added Section 134-15B Railroad District. 134-16 Permitted Special Uses. In 134-16, we changed special permit to special use permit and changed Board of Appeals to Planning Board throughout the section. 134-16C Added: Unless the use has begun or substantial construction is commenced. 134-16F-2 Added: All applications for a special use permit shall comply with both the special use standards set forth herein and the site plan review requirements of 134-27, while subsequent subsections of 134-16F have been renumbered. 134-16F, the old 2 and old 3 have been rewritten, and we added 8. 134-16G-1A Changed livable floor area to gross floor area. Changed gross square feet to gross floor area. 134-16G-1C Changed: Two off-street parking spaces shall be provided on said lot for the use of each dwelling unit, 2 off-street parking per dwelling unit, see 134-17M. One space for each dwelling unit under 1,000 square feet. square feet gross floor area, one and one-half spaces for each dwelling unit between one thousand and fifteen hundred square feet gross area, gross floor area, two spaces for each dwelling unit over fifteen hundred square feet gross floor area. One thirty-four sixteen G two changed marinas, et cetera, including motel, motel, and restaurant as authorized under R one two, marinas with connected restaurants as authorized under B one and P R one. One thirty-four sixteen G two B three changed from yard to yard setbacks. One thirty-four sixteen G two B three A changed all yards including front, rear, and side for main buildings for motel, motel, restaurant, fifty feet two, all yards including front, rear, and side for main buildings fifty feet. One thirty-four sixteen G two B three C deleted yards adjacent to Hudson River may be reduced to less than fifty feet by zoning board of appeals, changed yards around buildings for accessory uses including maintenance and sales, may be established by zoning board of appeals, but in no event need, need exceed the minimum standards set forth above. Two, yards around buildings for accessory uses may be established by the planning board, but in no event need exceed the minimum standards set forth above. One thirty-four sixteen G two C one A and B added stories, changed accessory buildings to accessory buildings and accessory structures. One thirty-four sixteen G two C three changed including storage and display of boats and marina merchandise to including storage of boats. One thirty-four sixteen G two F added in P R one, commercial facilities incidental to the operation of public recreation uses such as refreshment stands, offices, and museums subject to a special use permit that takes into consideration factors such as traffic, property size, and location. One thirty-four sixteen G three, old three was moved to one thirty-four fifteen and one thirty-four fifteen A. One thirty-four sixteen G four, old four tourist homes was deleted. One thirty-four sixteen three and G three and four added subsections, home occupations and home professional offices and live-work units.
Okay, uh, one thirty-four dash seventeen supplementary, uh, regulations applying to all residence districts and section one thirty-four dash eighteen supplemental, supplementary regulations applying to all district merged into section one thirty-four dash seventeen. Supplementary regulations applying to all districts, uh, sorry, that was, that was reason to do, section one thirty-four dash eighteen now not used, one thirty-four dash seventeen A added definition of accessory building, accessory, accessory structure, replaced accessory building with accessory building and accessory structure used throughout. One thirty-four dash seventeen A added building permit requirement for accessory building, accessory, accessory structure. One thirty-four dash seventeen A one A and B deleted or a garage changed height and setback measurements requirement. One thirty-four dash seventeen A three added unregistered. One thirty-four dash seventeen A four added an accessory building or accessory structure may not be used as a residence or an accessory apartment, and no more than two accessory buildings or accessory structures are permitted on any lot, including enclosed play structures. One thirty-four dash seventeen A five added no more than two accessory buildings or two accessory structures are permitted on any lot, including, uh, just reread that, uh, including enclosed play structure. One thirty-four dash seventeen D changed to exceptions to yard requirements in residence district. One thirty-four dash seventeen D one changed references fences or walls to refer to chapter forty-two. One thirty-four dash seventeen D two added one thirty-four dash seven C ten and one thirty-four eight C eleven. One thirty-four dash seventeen D three changed special permit to special use permit. One thirty-four dash seventeen eight added exceptions to yard requirements, added reference to chapter forty-two. One thirty-four dash seventeen F previously one thirty-four dash seventeen E corrected references to one thirty-four dash nineteen L to one thirty-four dash nineteen K. One thirty-four seventeen K added a new subsection accessory apartments. One thirty-four dash seventeen H was one thirty-four dash eighteen A changed to refer to chapter one oh four. One thirty-four dash seventeen I was part of one thirty-four dash eighteen A changed to refer to chapter one oh eight. One thirty-four dash seventeen J moved from one thirty-four dash eighteen B was all municipal and governmental uses by the village of Coal Spring of land and or buildings are hereby permitted in each and every district, changed to all municipal and governmental uses by the village of Coal Spring of land and or building are hereby permitted as right in each and every district and not subject to zoning board appeals or planning board or historic district review board approvals. One thirty-four dash seventeen K moved from one thirty-four dash eighteen C, one thirty-four dash eighteen C one B three deleted, one thirty-four dash eighteen C two changed from unlicensed to unregistered. One thirty-four dash seventeen K one B one added, but same, same may not be used for any purpose. One thirty-four dash seventeen K one B two changed must exit in addition to the area so occupied for such storage to must exit, I must exist, sorry, and the, and the storage must conform to the required setbacks for accessory buildings and accessory structures in addition to the area so occupied for such storage.
One thirty-four seventeen M added sufficient ADA Americans with Disabilities Act parking spaces and type must be provided in conformance with the ADA regulations, fractional required spaces shall be routed up to the next whole number. Parking table text was reforming to a table, deleted parking space perp in the use call, changed floor area to gross floor area throughout, changed schools from one for each twelve seats or students or four seats in the auditorium, whichever is greater, to one for each five students, changed hospitals, sanatoriums, philanthropic or illiamensory institutions to hospitals and sanatoriums, we wanted to get rid of the word illiamensory. Deleted rooming house or tourist home, changed eating and drinking places from each three seats to seventy-five square feet of gross floor area, changed hotels and motels to hotels and bed and breakfast. Bowling alley changed to commercial amusement venues and from four for each alley to one for five seats. Home occupation or accessory professional office except physicians, dentists, and attorneys changed to home occupation or home professional office, and parking spaces changed to one per one hundred fifty square feet of net floor area used by home occupation or professional office. Professional office including physicians, dentists, and attorneys in residential districts changed to perfec, business and professional offices, financial institutions, and parking spaces changed, changed to one for each one hundred and fifty square feet of gross floor area. Retail stores, business, and professional offices, financial institutions changed to retail stores, and parking spaces changed from one for each two hundred and fifty square feet of gross, ground gross floor area of the building, and one for each three hundred square feet of upper floor gross floor area. Industrial establishments, warehouses, wholesale businesses, research, research laboratories, contractors' businesses, establishments for manufacture, processing, or assembly of goods changed to one family dwelling and parking spaces changed to spaces. Other uses changed to other uses not specific, specifically listed, and parking spaces changed to sufficient parking shall be provided for any use not listed herein based upon documentation of parking experience elsewhere through surveys of demand at existing uses that may be applicable and/or a study of patterns of local vehicle use, preserve the purpose and intent of this section as determined by the planning board. Loading and unloading changed to two and multiple family dwelling, and parking spaces changed to one space for each dwelling unit less than one thousand square, square feet gross, gross floor area, one point five spaces for each dwelling unit between one thousand and fifteen hundred square feet gross floor area, two spaces for each dwelling unit larger than fifteen hundred square feet, square feet gross floor area, added accessory apartment with one space, added B four district with two hundred square feet per dwelling unit. One thirty-four seventeen M seven changed from fee in lieu to parking impact fee. One thirty-four seventeen M seven A deleted B two, added for business and commercial uses as required by this section. One thirty-four seventeen N added dumpsters refer to chapter forty-eight. One thirty-four seventeen R added new subsection landscaping within and around parking lots.
How's everybody doing out there? Okay, one thirty-four nineteen, title changed from non-conforming uses to non-conforming uses, non-conforming buildings, non-conforming lots. One thirty-four dash nineteen C added or ceases for any reason. One thirty-four nineteen C one changed from two years to twelve months. One thirty-four dash nineteen C three deleted clear intent on the part of the owner to abandon the non-conforming use. One thirty-four nineteen E deleted a non-conforming use may be changed to a use of the same or higher classification upon procuring a special permit according to section one thirty-four sixteen, and such use thereafter shall not be changed to a lower classification. One thirty-four dash nineteen G deleted cessation of junkyards, notwithstanding any other provisions of this chapter, any automobile wrecking yard or other junkyard in existence in any residential district at the date of enactment of this chapter shall, at the expiration of three years from such date, become a prohibited and unlawful use and shall be discontinued. One thirty-four dash nineteen G formerly one thirty-four dash nineteen H changed does not increase the degree to does not increase the vertical height of the non-conforming building or the degree. One thirty-four dash nineteen J changed to refer to chapter one twenty-four unsafe buildings. One thirty-four dash twenty C changed reference from one thirty-four nineteen B to chapter one twenty-four unsafe buildings again. One thirty-four dash twenty-one C added additional information required for a building permit can be found in chapter forty, building construction. One thirty-four dash twenty-one D previously one thirty-four dash twenty-one C deleted the form of building permit is attached to this chapter and may be amended from time to time by resolution of the village board. One thirty-four dash twenty-two A changed the form of certificate of occupancy is attached to this chapter to the form of certificate of occupancy can be obtained from the village clerk. One thirty-four dash twenty-two B deleted no non-conforming use shall be maintained, renewed, changed, or extended without a certificate of occupancy, and in parentheses, certificate of pre-existing use therefore, having first been issued by the building inspector. One twenty-two, I'm sorry, one thirty-four dash twenty-two B previously one thirty-four dash twenty-two C changed after the erection, alteration, or non-conforming use to after the erection or alteration, changed the form of certificate of occupancy is attached to this chapter to the form of certificate of occupancy can be obtained from the village clerk. One thirty-four dash twenty-three changed the village board shall appoint said members and designate its chairman to, the mayor shall nominate said members and shall designate its chairperson subject to the approval of the board of trustees.
Okay, one thirty-four dash twenty-four, one million, sorry, uh, added chapter forty-two, fences and walls or, or chapter one fourteen, swimming pools, spas, and hot tubs. One thirty-four dash twenty-four B topic changed from special permits to variances, added chapter forty-two, fences and walls or chapter one fourteen, swimming pools, spas, and hot tubs. One thirty-four dash twenty-four B one added chapter forty-two or chapter one four, one fourteen. One thirty-four dash twenty-four B one A added chapter forty-two or chapter one fourteen. One thirty-four twenty-four B one C added chapter forty-two or chapter one fourteen. One thirty-four dash twenty-four B two rewritten to causes which involve a variance from the bulk or dimensional requirements within the subject zoning district or from any general dimensional requirement will be reviewed pursuant to the area of variances standards in the New York State Village Law, section seven dash seven one two dash B three. In cases which involve a variance from the permitted use for the zoning district instead of any area type variance, the standards for use variance set forth in New York State Village Law, section seven dash seven one two dash B two shall be applied. In granting either an area or use variance, the zoning board of appeal shall prescribe any conditions that it deems necessary or desirable. One thirty-four dash twenty-five deleted the use for which this special use permit is sought, deleted or special permit is attached to this chapter, add can be obtained from the village clerk. One thirty-four dash twenty-five C deleted applications for special use permits, add all such referrals or engagements by other consultants and or professionals will be at the applicant's expense. One thirty-four dash twenty-five D deleted special permit, added interpretation. One thirty-four dash twenty-five E deleted special permit, deleted upon failure to submit such report, the planning board shall be deemed to have approved the application or appeal. One thirty-four dash twenty-five F deleted special permit. One thirty-four dash twenty-seven A added new subsection special use permits. One thirty-four dash twenty-seven B previously one thirty-four dash twenty-seven A deleted general, changed subdivision plaits to site plans, added in conformance with chapter eighty-one outdoor lighting standards, added the comprehensive plan or master plan, deleted as may be in existence from time to time. One thirty-four dash twenty-seven B three previously one thirty-four dash twenty-seven A three added including where considered appropriate by the planning board, a three-D model showing lot build-out. One thirty-four dash twenty-seven B eight previously one thirty-four dash twenty-seven A added eight, where appropriate, a New York State Department of Transportation Traffic survey to determine vehicular and pedestrian safety to and from site. One thirty-four dash twenty-seven C one previously one thirty-four dash twenty-seven B one added letter of credit in four places, changed village board to village planning board, added or a letter of credit in three places, changed bond to surty bond in three places, deleted amount, replace the village board shall be requested to by, it can change, oh, okay, village board shall be requested to by, it can changed approval and in to approval if the property owner or the developer or applicant is found to be in. One thirty-four dash seven D one previously one thirty-four dash twenty-seven C one changed building code to New York State Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code in two places. One thirty-four dash twenty-seven D three previously one thirty-four dash twenty-seven C three changed any such plan to any such previously approved plan. One thirty-four dash twenty-seven D four previously one thirty-four dash twenty-seven C four added including waiving the need for public hearing.
To the last page. One thirty-four dash twenty-nine A changed from person to person firm or corporation. One thirty-four dash twenty-nine B added New York State Supreme Court. One thirty-four thirty changed who shall properly record such complaint and immediately investigate and report thereon to the village board of trustees, he shall also take such action as he deems immediately necessary and advisable, a report of which shall of which shall also be made to the village board. That's changed to the procedures for the filing and investigation of complaints can be found in chapter 40, Building Construction. 134-31, changed the title notice to stop work or remedy violation to stop work notice order to remedy. Deleted subsection and replaced with the procedures for the issuance and enforcement of a stop work order or orders of remedy can be found in chapter 40, Building Construction. 134-32, inserted New York before the references to the three laws. Excuse me. Appendix A zoning map changed to zoning map 09-XX-21. Appendix C added the date of the map. Appendix D listing of property parcels was deleted. Appendix, added appendix F, CNEP overlay map. The end.
Good. So what I'll do is I, we have a few, I think we have three correspondence emails, and I will read those. First is from Eric Worth, Chair of Colspring ZBA. Thank you for your heroic work to improve chapter 134. Below, he described areas where the revisions do not remedy problems I've encountered while serving on the ZBA or potentially introduce new problems. I've also noted typos, editing errors, and inconsistencies. General note, the phrase residence district and residential district appear throughout the chapter but are nowhere defined. By definition, they are ambiguous because they might refer only to the R districts or to any district where residential uses are permitted, such as B1. Definition of accessory apartments. The three items in this series are not parallel. Is a part of subordinate and incidental to. To make them parallel, you need to add to is a part of subordinate to and incidental to. In addition, the final clause is difficult. What does it modify? Can the point about owner occupancy be included as simple aggregate? That is incidental to an owner occupied single-family dwelling located on the same lot. I deleted individual on the phrasing above on the assumption that it's redundant and thus potentially confusing. Definition of accessory use. The newly added allowed cannot be understood without and in front of it. The result is still cumbersome enough that I would expand the wording for clarity. Parentheses, a use that is customarily incidental and subordinate to the principal use of building and is allowed and located. Definition of accessory building, accessory structure, the double modifier, the use of which, the use of which is cumbersome. The second one about being on the ground is given in the definition for structure. It is thus implicit here and can be omitted just as it is, just as it is in the definition of building. Definition of basement, the two parts of the definition, partly underground and having equally say the same thing. Moreover, partly is inaccurate and incomplete. Example, given a story, a story one quarter underground is partly underground but is not a basement. Conversely, a story entirely underground is not partially underground but is nevertheless a basement. I'd just say the definition is one form like this, basement, a story having at least one half of its clear height below average grade level of the adjoining ground. Definition of bed and breakfast language means cleaning up. For example, bed and breakfast, a dwelling occupied by its owner and licensed by New York State with paid accommodations for transients, no more than three guest rooms and no separate cooking facilities for guests and allowing stays at no more than 30 continuous days. Definition of building, the addition of and walls means that the addition of, I'm sorry, let me start again. The addition of and walls means that, example, given gazebos with open screened or windowed sides, windowed sides would not count as a building. Is that intended? Does a roof porch without walls count as part of the building? This ambiguity is especially harmful when being, when building areas calculated. The definition of area building recognize only two types of structures, building and uncovered structures. It's now unclear whether structure with a roof but not no walls counts toward the building area. Definition of lot depth of, here means, here mean is retained but in the definition for lot width of mean is replaced by average. Definition of story half and story height of, how to measure the height of an unfinished topmost story remains unclear and was a problem during ZBA hearings in 2020. The definition of story half refers to ceiling height, but this term is not defined. If a topmost story is unfinished, do you measure up to the bottom of the rafters or the sheathing above the rafters? The definition of story height of tells us to measure to top surface of the ceiling joists. This phrase has two problems. One, does top surface refer to the face of the beam, the surface closest to, or the surface closest to the floor, or does it refer to the upper surface of the beams, that surface farthest from the floor? I believe that the overhead beam in the topmost story, what support the roof, are normally called rafters, not joists. The 2010 New York State Residential Code implies that ceiling height, code implied that ceiling height in an unfinished attic is the distance up to the sheathing above the beam. Beams and girders spaced not less than four feet on center may project not more than six inches below the required ceiling height. That language was dropped from the 2020 New York State Residential Code. 134-7, said proposed dwelling may have a front yard of 25 feet, or said proposed dwelling may have front yard of no greater than the average setback of all existing dwellings so located. How does a reader choose between the two alternatives in deciding which to apply? Why was the new wording underlined above added? It seems to change nothing. The same rule is repeated in 134-17D3 but without the underlying part. 134-17, a preamble. An accessory building or accessory structure, including a detached garage, is any building or structure that has a combined measurement of between 16 feet or larger, length plus width plus height. If the 16-foot rule is essential to the definition of the accessory building or structure as this wording implies, the rule should be moved to 134-2. On the other hand, if the rule's purpose is to distinguish accessory buildings and structures that require building permits and must conform to an area requirements from those that don't, the rule should be rephrased here. For example, an accessory building or accessory structure, including a detached garage, that has combined measurements of 16 feet or larger, length plus width plus height requires a, on and on. 134-17, in the heading residence was deleted so that the heading now refers to all districts. However, the term resident district or residential district still appears three times in this section in clauses that seem potentially relevant to all districts, such as the provision on avoiding visual obstructions at intersections, 134-17B1. 134-17A1C, such accessory buildings and accessory structures, including detached garage, shall have the required setbacks, side and rear yards for zoning districts in which it is located. This rule seems to create a contradiction. The rule requires accessory buildings and structures to be located outside the yard, but the rule appears in a section telling us when accessory buildings and structures may be placed in yard. Also, it is located, should be they are located. 134-17F, and which is proposed for use as a one-family dwelling. Does this mean that 134-17F applies only to undeveloped lots on which a new building is proposed? That is, does it mean that lots already containing a dwelling are not subject to this exception and must have 10-foot side yards, no matter how narrow the lot? This is a major ambiguity and should be clarified. Compare how 134-7C4 and 134-17B3 use the term proposed dwelling to apparently limit a provision to undeveloped lots despite the reference to proposed use as a dwelling in 134-17F. The ZBA has historically applied the provision to narrow lots already containing a dwelling. In addition, the rest of the provision is convoluted to the point of incomprehensibility. Does it mean the following? And which has a lot width less than 60 feet and which is proposed for use as a one-family dwelling, the minimum width of each side yard shall be reduced to two inches for each foot of lot width, except for that minimum side yard shall not be less than seven and one half feet. 134-19G, nonconforming buildings may be continued, repaired, structurally altered, moved, reconstructed, or enlarged provided that such action does not increase the vertical height of the nonconforming building or the degree or not degree of or create any new nonconformity to district bulk regulations. This section has always presented an ambiguity. If part of the nonconforming building intrudes into a required yard, may the owner increase the height of that, of the part in the yard without a variance, assuming that the addition remains under the general height limit. After all, the nonconformity in question here is the building's intrusion into the yard. Increasing the height does not increase the degree of that conformity or create new conformity, nonconformity to district bulk regulations. The new wording, the new wording underlined above seems intended to address this ambiguity, but the wording is imprecise. On its face, it says that no part of the nonconforming building may be increased in height. Do you mean to say the following? Provided that such actions does not increase the degree of or create any new nonconformity to district bulk regulations or increase the vertical height of any part of a nonconforming building located in a required yard? 134-24B, to issue variances for any of the requirements of this chapter, chapter 42, fences and walls, or chapter 114, swimming pools, spas, and hot tubs, requires the obtaining of such variances from the zoning board of appeals. This wording is garbled because of an editing error and requires correction. Thank you for the review and comments. Next is Michael Hellman. I believe Michael is the independent living services. Thank you.
That's Joe, this is from Westchester.
What's that?
That Joe is the, Joe is the partner, Michael's from the Westchester person.
Okay, so this is from, but it's from Michael. Okay, right, got you. Thank you for the opportunity to submit this short statement for consideration with any code revisions being discussed tonight. By way of introduction, you represent individuals with all types of abilities as such are greatly concerned that the code sections on the agenda do not include disability access improvements. Without enumerating any, on the many sites needing disability access for those with mobility impairments, we urge the village to be much more proactive in its efforts to assist and enable local property owners and tenants, especially merchants, to achieve better accessibility. Both the Americans with Disability Acts and the New York State Human Rights Law prohibit the exclusion of persons with disabilities by failing to remove barrier. Village can avoid the possibility of being cited for violations by strongly addressing this issue in its code revision. Thank you for your consideration of this important matter. Finally, Donald McDonald. Latest proposed chapter 134 regulations for the village. The following are my suggestions regarding the proposed revised zoning code. I'm taking the proposed text for each item and adding my proposed in bold italic and/or cross out through to, you know, removing the portion of text. For sections 134-2, word usage and definition, proposed to add definition for clear height, used in basement definition, proposed in half-story definition. Clear height, height from finished floor to underside of floor or roof joists above less, less finished ceiling thickness. Defining, number two, defining street line seems redundant as the definition is essentially the same as front line, front lot line. Three, proposed definition half-story, an uppermost story in which the potential floor area as measured to the bottom of the roof structure, less finished ceiling thickness is no more than seven feet in clear height and no more than 50% of the interior floor area of the story directly below. Number four, front yard, adds C lot line, front definition. Number five, rear yard, adds C lot, rear definition. R1, single-family residential setback height and lot coverage regulations. My experience as a member of ZBA has taught me there is too large a gap between the requirement of the code and the as-built characteristics of the village. When I was a member of the code update committee, after much discussion, I agreed with the recommendations to leave R1 and most other district setback requirements as they presently are. My ZBA experience since this decision has caused me to regret it. The ZBA regularly receives variance requests that are necessarily for a substantial deviation from the requirements of the zode and are regularly granted. I would submit that when the distance between the code and the as-built reality is intended to preserve, as-built reality it is intended to preserve, is so large that ZBA decisions tend to become subjective and arbitrary. Further, for the same, same set of facts, the decisions may vary substantially over time as members and chairs articulate through their appointment, appointed term on the board. Since the ZBA regularly request, is regularly requested to grant large variances from the code and does find good reason to do so, the net effect is a board forced to, in effect, legislate and alternate code from the one approved by elected village board of trustees. This is not right. I would suggest we need to literally measure the village. We should create a hard database of existing building setbacks, coverages, and heights. This survey would be for each building block and area of the village. Computer-aided applications such as GIS, software, updated Google-type information and information the county already has will make this job easier and would be spot field checked for accuracy. From this database, informed defensible standards and regulations would be proposed and their potential effects reliably predicted. Village will end up with a zoning code that defines building bulk and its replacement of the lot much closer to the physical reality governed. This will reduce the amount of building inspection referrals to ZBA and allow the board to more properly carry out its job of defending and or granting exceptions to the code in a more consistent manner. Thank you, Donald. Okay, we'll open the floor to more comments.
I'd like to make one comment about my, Fred. In no way, in no way, shape, or form am I criticizing the chair of the ZBA yet. It was a great chair, fine job. My problem is that the issue I'm trying to talk about is subject to all chairs, all members of ZBA. You have the code numbers here and reality here, there's so much distance in between it can't help but get subjective. You can't help but get where are we in terms of relation of what the needs are and what where the code is. When I'm on Route Interstate 84, driving 65 miles an hour, I practically get run over. What's the speed limit? The stated speed limit is 55, but the reality speed limit is whatever the police say won't take it for, which is 80 or above. So, you know, that's fine, but eventually somebody has to state a new number for what the speed limit is. It's kind of the same thing here. We need to have something that's more, and see, when I was on code update committee, at the time we were looking, this is only speaking for me personally, when, at the time we were looking at the setback requirements and the characteristics of the village, the mountain of stuff in front of the code update committee to get done, the idea of going and surveying the village and measuring it and finding out was, it was, you know, it was more than I think anybody could imagine doing. And so, after much discussion, we ended up agreeing to leave it as it was. I was never 100% comfortable with that decision if for only reason for three years before that I was running for trustee and saying we should measure the village. And so, and then the opportunity of going back on ZBA and now kind of being back in that same position as a member and seeing more that same position as a member and seeing more cases come in and seeing the problem again, I started to think, you know, we should, we should do this differently, we should do this differently. So, I applaud, on my knees I applaud the effort that all of you have put in for the code update, the code changes, the work. I did nothing compared to what these people up here did. And I, we owe you a debt of gratitude. And I, and my comments are no way trying to denigrate what you've done, but I think that we should eventually push it forward and we should get some hard data on what the village is in numbers that we can then take that and make good rational decisions about how to tighten the code, the requirements up, to shrink it to what the village is today. Thank you.
I have a slightly different tack with my comment. I mean, I think this is a tremendous body of work. It is many, many years in the making. I think it goes back, well, I've lived in the village now almost fifteen years. It goes back to the comprehensive plan board, which was created, I think, back in two thousand and six. I joined it, I was appointed to it, I think in two thousand and eight or two thousand and nine. That was implemented, then the Code Update Committee was created. I joined that in twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen. You know, it's interesting to me, I'll just note as, I mean, I appreciate the dramatic reading of the summary, and I was trying to follow along on my phone, and I've seen many versions of the red line, and obviously, the last one I saw as a member of the Code Update Committee was twenty nineteen, and it's been, a lot of things have been changed since then. There are always going to be things that need to be fixed as far as the consistency and agreement of, you know, subject and verb and so on, but I'm struck by the, I'm just looking at the one thirty-four dash twelve, you know, one of my favorite topics, that M-one dash one, MU dash one, mixed use district, which is, you know, essentially it's what is known as the marathon problem on the zoning method. And that has been the subject of a lot of discussion, many, many, many hours of discussion and presentations, argument to date over the last dozen or so years on various boards. And it seems to me, from the, maybe there will be, you know, this avalanche of emails and letters after I finish my brief comment, maybe there will be some comments upon this, but I haven't heard any or seen any, and I think that that's a testament to the fact that, you know, that is a very important piece of zoning code reform that I think was done in a very thoughtful, deliberate way by the village board working with the recommendations from the Code Update Committee, looking at the comprehensive plan and the LWRS, et cetera. I noted some early in an email right there today, went back and I found, I had to look in, I had to go to my attic and find my letter to the village board, October twenty-ninth, twenty nineteen, in the pre-times about the, there was a draft of that one thirty-four dash twelve that would have allowed up to fifty percent lot coverage for mixed use, which I, at the time, I, that was, had been worked on by the Code Update Committee prior to my joining it, and that concerned me greatly. I wrote a single-spaced, three-page letter with my concerns, and I saw today, because I have been focused on other things, I, to my satisfaction, that the percentage had been changed to thirty percent, which is in fact consistent with the R-one district. I think that's reasonable for all three of the potential uses in the proposed MU dash one district, whether it's residential, commercial, or mixed use, is thirty percent for each of them. So, I just mentioned that as an aside to say, you know, consider my three-page letter withdrawn, I didn't hear, you know, Dave read it, so it's, you don't have to think about it anymore. I won't certainly, but I do want to just address the point of, you know, conforming the code to the realities of the village, and that, that's just an ongoing process. I mean, what I've, what I've seen in the, certainly going back to my work in the comp plan and seeing the proposed changes here, I mean, it's, it's not perfect, it's going to evolve. I think there are lots of very good ideas about, some of which have been proposed tonight for achieving that, to remove subjectivity, to make clear to everybody what the rules are, so that this sort of creation of exceptions upon exceptions doesn't continue into the future, but it's, it's a heck of a lot of work to do that. And so, these, maybe the technologies are getting cheaper and more available to do them, there are things that are possible today that weren't possible five, ten years ago. Maybe there will come a time in the next few years where it's actually, it's actually doable for, for people who are, you know, essentially part-time, those board members and the mayor, and for the volunteers on the committees to actually leverage these tools, which are pretty amazing. And maybe there will come a time, maybe there are communities out there in the region or nationally that have done this in a way that is not cost prohibitive, but I do, I do see in the nine, or I think it's eleven pages of summary that were read tonight, there is, there's been a lot of work put into trying to, to the extent possible, conform the code to the realities of each of the districts and creating, let's say, some more districts and, you know, but there does come a time when, I mean, the code, I think, or the zoning law is now a hundred pages long, you know, at least, and, you know, there's a danger in making it too long so that, or too complex so that people, you know, can't understand it, can't, can't know what they, what is expected of them. That there's a, I think there's a balance there. Now, maybe there's an easy solution to that, but I will just say in conclusion that, you know, I am very happy to be sitting here on September seventh, two thousand and twenty-one, and knowing that this is the product of a lot of work, of a lot of people, certainly the village, the current village board and trustees, but many, many, many volunteers on all the boards, the special board, the ZBA, planning board, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, thank you. With that, I personally support implementing these changes and thank the board for its diligence this afternoon.
Would you mind? Thank you, Matt. Yes, Eric.
Eric Worth, one seventy-three Main Street. I'd like to second Donald's critique of the current situation, and I would add that in addition to the problem of the ZBA being forced to essentially legislate by granting substantial variances over and over, there's a problem of minor variances, a barrage of red tape that residents.
Eric, excuse me, I'm having some difficulty hearing you. Do you think that, would you be comfortable?
Sure.
Okay.
I was saying that in addition to the problem of the ZBA being forced to essentially legislate by granting substantial variances over and over, we have a barrage of minor requests that owners of older lots are forced, carrying out some routine project that normally would not conflict with the zoning code at all, but it, because of the, the old-style layouts of lots, there's a foot here, a foot there, it violates the current code, and thus, residents are put through the whole process over something that should be. So, I think the solution, the solution is not easy. It's a philosophical problem, some fundamental rethinking, and I feel like my first stab at it would be that we need to, there's a contradiction here. We accept the fact of non-conforming properties. We allow them, they're grandfathered in, and there's hundreds of them. So, the contradiction is that we then force them all to live according to this alien code. Since there's such a large number, we need a second code. I see like a mapping, a mapping of the two sections of the village, the old village and the new village. Now, our current code suits the new village just fine. We need a second code for the old village. If we, if we accept the building layouts as non-conforming, and we don't require them to be changed, the way that, the fact that they're, the way they are reflects a whole different way of thinking about buildings, placement, social life, a way of thinking that's no longer accepted, but it was, it was the norm a hundred years ago, two hundred years ago, and so we have the building, that's why those buildings are, the non-conforming buildings are the way they are. So, if we're going to have a zoning code, it should be in sync with that older philosophy of placement. Shouldn't, we should have this, the second zoning code that's for the old village should be based on that older way of thinking. If you buy a house in that section, if you live there, if you choose to live there, you are living, you're choosing to, choosing to that older philosophy of building placement, and that would cut down on these problems. I'm not sure, maybe Donald could amplify, but I'm not sure what the benefit would be of measuring, of creating a database of measurements of current lots. It would be a lot of work, and I'm just wondering what, whether the payoff, the application of that database would be valuable enough to make it worthwhile. Seems to me more we need a map just of old village and new village, without necessarily worrying about the current measurements, getting them all in one place.
Well, I would think that if you're going to say, for instance, say, okay, well, we don't like the front yard setback requirements in the R-one zone, what should be the front yard setback requirement? We can all throw out a number, but if we had some idea of what the average setback requirement was in different parts of the village, we'd have a much better way of saying, well, over here, you know, we find, we could actually have the average of all setbacks in the village, and we could have the average in the old village and in the new village, and that number would give us a rational basis for which to then say a number that would be good for the new code, rather than people to sit in a room and go, well, I think it should be this because, you know, something. I think you've got to base it on some kind of rational factual data, which is, you know, relatively, okay, maybe you don't measure every single house in the village, but I mean, I did it one time. I took, the, the, the Putnam County gave me a, it was a, it was a map that was flattened for GIS, and I took it and I overlaid it on a Google map of the village so I could see where the buildings are, and I found a couple of blocks around over there, where I could see all, the trees weren't in front of the houses. And then I traced the houses, and I had their, the lot lines from the county, and I was able to, not in too much, not in that much time in one block, figure out the areas of all the, of all the buildings, the area of the block, the average setbacks for the side yards, front yards, rear yards, and I had a ton of data, and it was amazing. I mean, it was like, wow, this is important. And I have a feeling if we had been in that room that night, and we were talking about potentially changing the setbacks for the R-one zone, if we had had data like that, we might have been more apt to suggest changes, because we would have something rational to point to, as opposed to, we all know that, we do all know that the code numbers are way different than what the reality of the village is, especially the, as Eric says, the old village. But that, and that's great, but when you're writing code, the people are going to spend, build buildings on or not build buildings on or whatever, you've got to base those things on some rational data. That's what I said. So, that's why I'm saying that. Maybe there's a, I, look, this village is filled with some really smart people. I'm sure that there's a way to put together some GIS work with some statistical analysis or whatever to say how much, you know, you need to measure, or how many buildings you need to measure to get a good idea of the averages that we have in this village. I'm sure that we could do something like that. But it's, you know, it's, it's a, this substantial project that has to be, you know, thought through and takes some time to do. So, you know, but again, I say that not to try to denigrate your work, which is great, and you pushed this forward fantastically in the village. You pushed the code forward tremendously. But I just think my experience on ZBA and being on Code Update Committee, especially my experience on ZBA, I would, I would recommend that we had more data on what the actual village, the physicality of our actual village, what it is. I think it would help.
John?
John Morton, sixty-first Street. I think that the way the code is drafted right now, I mean, it really borrows from many codes throughout, you know, municipalities, villages, everywhere throughout the state. It's very consistent. May not match up to what every property here is, you know, pre-code, back in the industrial, you know, working for the foundry type quarters, be close to the, you know, the work site. But I think getting these standard numbers that you find throughout the state is a good start, and it gives you a mental framework. And I think we're a community that, you know, values space and openness and the beauty of the Hudson Highlands, and a lot of that's taken into consideration. So, with regards to where you have conflicts of, you know, old properties and denser developments to more open space, you do have the state law criteria for evaluating each zoning application. And in, as, you know, Eric and Donald know, there's five, and one of them's community character, and what we do is we look up and down the block to see how the rest of those buildings are situated. So, it's just one element that we actually consider, but it gets weighed in the whole process of whether or not we grant a variance in a given situation. So, it really, it looks at, you know, what's around. We tend to try to encourage people to go take a look, and, you know, we also have photographs that are brought in. So, a lot of this is all weighed in, and the state recognizes through its code and through the five criteria that, you know, it's hard to really make anything definitive. And, but I think the goal is, and, you know, as Eric has stated throughout, you know, in many of the applications, is that you grant the least, you know, variance that you can under circumstance, looking at all the alternatives. And that's really what state law provides and what it says. So, you know, every community, every property owner here is relying on the code basically being enforced. And one issue that does come up every now and then is, well, they have this, and they have this, and, you know, whether it's a six-foot fence running along a sidewalk. We don't do code enforcement on the zoning board of appeals, but one application that recently came before us, down in the Constitution area, was that everybody has a six-foot fence. So, so they say, well, look at the community character, everybody's got one. That doesn't make it legitimate. So, one of the things I find that we're up against on the board is, you know, everybody's got these, like, fences up, but we don't have the time to really go through to see if everybody's gotten approvals on that. So, this is something that we can't handle, but the applicants are bringing to us. So, that's the only thing I see being a problem. I think, you know, would it be great with what Donald says to put together a big, you know, consensus of what really the layouts are and all the property? Yeah, it would be helpful for the board, we just switch over, we have it for every application that came before us. If that's not really feasible to put that together, we still have the five state law criteria, we have the code, which has the objective goals that we try to seek, so each one becomes a weighing process. The problem I just see sometimes is the enforcement issue, and, you know, they've got this, and they say, well, you grant it to them, but not to them, and we have to find the reasons why we make one application to grant one and not another. So, anyway, thank you for doing the code, and code looks great, you know, maybe some of these other criterias. Eric is doing a wonderful job on the board as chairman, so, you know, my hat's off to him. He's running a really good ship, and I wouldn't want to be doing all that work. Those are my statements.
Thank you, John. Anyone else?
Dave, is it appropriate to ask a question of the members of the ZBA who are here?
Not really.
Okay.
So, we have, there's no other comments on that. I think there are three chapters that we had no comments on. Is that right? One oh-four, one eleven, and one twenty-four. So, do you want to make a motion to close the, I'll make a motion to close public comment or close the public hearing on Chapters one oh-four, one eleven, and one twenty-four?
Second.
All in favor?
No.
Okay, we will leave Chapters seventy-six and one thirty-four open.
Okay, we will leave chapters seventy-six and one thirty-four open, verbal, verbal, and written comment. We'll set another date, we'll have to set a date to, for the board to discuss comments, and, okay, tonight, and, and then we'll have a continuation of the hearing, and to make changes if we feel necessary, and then we can hear more comments, and then close it at that time or continue on. So thank you all for your time tonight, and your very close review of it all, that's appreciated. I personally don't take any offense to Donald or anyone that's looked through and finds, finds, you know, things either not clear, or finds, if you might have comments or recommendations, I think that's useful. I mean, we went through some of these things, especially like ceiling heights, and things like that, like back and forth and forever, so, you know, it's good to have more input, and we'll take everything into consideration, so thank you for your review, set of time to continue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Given where we are right now, do you want to continue on?
Yeah, I do. So I think it's gonna go on fairly quickly. We don't have to read the whole resolution. So the next is the resolution to set the date, setting a date and time for a public hearing, closing the local laws, amending chapter sixty-four, one oh eight, one fourteen, and one twenty-six of the village code, adding chapter one thirty-two to the village code, and repealing chapter one oh one of the village code. What's that? I'll make a motion, yes, to...
I'll second it.
Are you, are you...
So...
You mean to set sixty-four, one oh eight, one fourteen, one twenty-six?
Yeah, the whole set.
The whole set?
Whole set.
Okay, and adding, adding chapter one thirty-two.
And so the date for that will be on Tuesday, September twenty-eighth, at six-thirty at Village Hall, eighty-five Main Street, close from New York. Roll call vote.
Trustee Early.
Yes.
Trustee Foley.
Yes.
Trustee Murphy.
Yes.
Trustee Woods.
May Marandy.
Aye. Next, the resolution sixty-four, is for the share of the growth improvement proposal. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
It's a roll call vote.
Second. Trustee Early.
Yes.
Trustee Foley.
Yes.
Trustee Murphy.
Yes.
Trustee Woods.
Yes.
May Marandy. Aye. Let's see. Next is the review and approval of Parking Committee recommendations. Do you think this, we can approve that, or is that some more of a discussion, we can table that one? Great, okay. So I guess the, the question is, or what we're approving, we can approve, and I think the last time I brought up how I doubt that this will be implemented, not that I thought it shouldn't be approved, so I think we can, we can approve the, or approve the recommendations of the committee, which doesn't mean we necessarily have to implement them in, in a certain time period, so...
Is it approval or acceptance?
I guess it would be, well, it says review and approval.
Yeah. But would the acceptance of that...
Acceptance, probably more appropriate.
Okay, so we will change that. So does anyone have any more comments on that, or will we make a motion to, to accept the Parkin Committee recommendations?
We'll second that.
Any discussion?
Recognizing the, the work and that the, the work of the committee provides a foundation for us to move forward on, that I think is really valuable, and moves us closer to getting a handle on parking, parking difficulties in the village, and I'm grateful to meet you and your colleagues.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next, the request for Phillips Town Bike Day, which I think is already in motion, so this is kind of...
This is the formality of...
This is the formality of...
They never formally came to the board and asked for permission to do this on village property.
So I'll make a motion to accept the request for the village, or the town's Bike Day on November eighteenth.
September, September.
Oh, September, sorry. That was...
Second.
Any discussion? Hopefully in the future they might ask it before they implement, or I'll start putting signs up, but all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Discussion on stakeholder group ad, I don't think there needs to be discussion, because everyone, all right, we're putting an ad in the paper, the same ad that we had, requesting or asking community members to join the stakeholder group.
We just need to modify dates.
With a modified date.
The other thing is, I'm thinking, how are the, the letters of interest that have already been received, will they be, do they have to resubmit?
What's that for?
I don't think they should have to.
No.
I don't think they should have to. So are you going to say that if you've already submitted a letter of interest, you don't have to do it again?
Yeah, we have five.
So what would the new date be?
October one.
Pardon me? October one?
October first.
For deadline of submission of an application?
I'm sorry?
October first.
Yes, I heard you, I didn't hear what Twitter said.
I was asking what the deadline was for, for the application to be submitted?
Yes.
Yeah, letter of interest.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and hopefully people have the time to do this.
You'll also need to modify the timeline or something?
Yeah, I would, I would, can we leave, March twenty-second? Can we leave that out of there and just...
It doesn't say March twenty-second.
March twenty-two, I'm sorry.
March, sorry, March twenty-twenty-two. Why not just with an extended timeline and lead it at that...
Yeah, I would, I would...
What, what you're trying to do with this is to say, say to people, we need your time, right, here's the range of time that we need.
So give it another, one, two days.
Well, so before we would have started, if we, if we had kept to the, to the schedule, or the proposed schedule, we would have convened mid-May and ended in March, so ten months. That's what we said before.
So pushing, you're pushing it three months ago to June?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would push that.
Yeah.
Who really care? Okay, so somebody would like to make the, the adjustments, I'm gonna make a...
So I would move to re-note the, re-note a call for volunteers for the Cold Spring Police Reform Stakeholders Group, with a modified deadline for submission of letters is October one, and notice that previously accepted applications will still be considered, and extending the timeline to June twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So I haven't looked, but what does the website say, referring people, the description of the duties to coldspringoutlaw.com? What's, what's it say?
It hasn't changed since it was up, when it first went up.
Well then, you know, is it still...
I think so.
Yeah.
I have no dates, so let's take a look.
I think we can change it.
Oops. Never mind.
Okay, well, we will...
We need to make sure that corresponds.
Adjust as needed.
So what I look at, the... So if you go to trustees, and then on, on the trustee tab, there's the police reform tab, and requirements for participation, the timeline needs to be extended under number two. So from, say, October or November twenty-twenty-one to June twenty-twenty-two. The other date, the May fifteenth date, hasn't changed. Submission for deadline of letters of interest needs to shift to October, what did you say, October first or thirtieth, first, right, Fran?
Yes, Thursday.
And then under important, again, adjusting that timeline to be consistent.
Okay, so we can make any adjustments needed on that.
Yeah.
There's the dates.
I'm sorry, there are two, I should have broken this up before. In addition to the text for chapter one thirty-four, there was the zoning map, and there's the dimensional, the table of dimensional requirements. As it turns out, the website describes the responsibilities for the zoning board of appeals, and in that description on the website, it talks about responsibilities that, with the adoption of chapter one thirty-four, will no longer be valid. Specifically, special permits, it says on the website, are granted by the zoning board of appeals. That's got to change. In addition, there is an application form to the zoning board of appeals. So if you want to be heard by the ZBA, you have to fill out this application form, which is eight and a half pages long, and includes a request for a special permit, which will no longer be something that a ZBA can approve. So changing the website is totally within the responsibility of us. Changing the application form for the ZBA requires approval from the village board. I believe Eric wants some additional changes made to the ZBA application, correct, Jeff?
Yes, it was just adding applicant's phone number and email address.
Email address, right. And in addition, it says you need eight copies of this, and eight copies of that, and eight copies of that, and eight copies of that, and I believe he wants that changed as well.
Correct.
So I would recommend that the ZBA identify what changes they want to their application form, and make that recommendation to the village board, so the village board can approve those changes.
Okay.
Everybody...
Sounds good.
Yes. Please, yes. Okay, I'll get in touch with Eric.
Okay, next is correspondence from River Architects.
May I ask a question before we get into this? From what I understand, the department, the New York State is willing to give you a variance on the ramp. Why are we, why are you here?
Well, the, it's, right now it's verbal approval.
Right, they're waiting on you to send materials to them.
To send, yeah.
Okay, so...
To, a couple of reasons, all right, so if we provide that steeper ramp, it is still a barrier, you know, and it, it is a safety issue for people on, say, wheelchair, or people who are trying to use the ramp, and...
They gave you, they granted you a variance, and you're saying the variance will create a safety hazard?
Yes, that's, that's my, my professional assessment of the steeper ramp, because even when they gave us that verbal approval, they didn't have any drawings in front of them, and so...
So you sent them the drawings?
I did send them the drawings, so, but, but what they asked us to do, they encouraged us to work out an easement with the village.
Oh, oh, sorry, not, not indicated at all in any communication.
They encouraged us to work out an easement, you know, similar to the way...
So did they approve this or not? Because, and what did they approve that based on? They couldn't have approved it based on absolutely nothing, I believe. Didn't Charlotte give them, or isn't there the slope that was changed, and that was the request, and they would grant that variance?
Right, but...
But so if they said that, then why, why isn't that, why would they encourage you then? They're saying that you can change the pitch.
Because, well...
But encouraging doesn't mean you have to. The village board is not going to, it's not, this is just, I think you're just complicating this matter more and more.
Okay, well, I think it is a, it is a safety issue, I spoke to...
How can it be a safety issue? Like, who is a safety issue? How can, how can a board from the state, or a representative from the state say that it's...
Thank you.
Now, we, we don't, I just don't understand, what's this?
It's just what you sent the state?
This is what I sent to the state.
So then it's up to them, I don't know enough to look at this. This is their call.
I can't see how this is going to cause any more of a haste, of a safety hazard than the other, where it's like, you know, like...
I am simply advocating, well, first, well, thank you, thank you for squeezing us in on a very busy night.
Quickly, quickly, we want to know.
And, but I am advocating for people, you know, with disabilities, we work really hard.
Don't need to put yourself...
I, I don't see, I don't understa, I, I'm not, I don't want to listen to that anymore, because honestly, I don't see how the state can give you a variance on something if they don't think that it's a minor, you know, first of all, it's not going to the full board or whatever, I understand, it's this person that can, can give or, a minor variance is, just like this is in fact what he said, and, and if he's, if he's looking at this and he understands that it's a minor, you know, it's a minor change, then I don't see any, any reason why, why there's going to be any more of a hazard. Where's the hazard?
The, let's say a person on a wheelchair, or somebody who has a wheel mobility, you know, something on wheel, let's say, delivery, hand truck, whatever, it's coming down on a steeper slope, it's coming down with a greater force.
And the state didn't take that into consideration?
I don't know.
Well, they're saying they're granting it once they get it, then...
What, what is the recommendation that you're making? Is it a modification to the ramp, or are you suggesting something else?
So modification to the pitch, to the ramp.
So that the ramp will fall on property?
No, no, I understand, but what are you, what's the issue that you're raising? If the state grants you this variance, which it seems that they will, given our, given the correspondence with the village, what is it that you're asking, right, so what are you suggesting as an alternative, excuse me, what are you suggesting as an alternative?
So I wrote a letter to the village board, you know, asking for other options without...
This was before the variance.
But that was before the, the state gave it's variance, right?
Before the variance, yeah. So what the variance is, from what I understand, what is out of our hands?
Yes, this was, this was written before the variance.
So now it's out of our hands, because it's the state's.
Okay, then I would like to bring one more, one more note, I mean, so there, the local government has obligations to meet the Civil Rights Code.
Julia, don't worry.
Why not? I mean, this is, we, it is our...
No, no, that, that letter's not here, just tell, tell me what civil rights code we're violating.
United States Department of Justice, Civil Rights Division, Americans with Disability Act, Title II, Regulations, Subpart B, General Requirements, Section thirty-five point one thirty, Paragraph B seven, states that a public entity shall make reasonable modifications in policies and practices and/or procedures when the modifications are necessary to avoid discrimination on the basis of disability, unless the public entity can demonstrate that making that modification would fundamentally alter the nature of the service program or activity, and so...
So what's the modification that you're suggesting?
I would, because the power is in the hands of the village board to enable an ADA ramp to occur at this property.
And there is one, and they're allowing it, and the state who's, who's created these laws is saying, fine, we're gonna give a variance.
Yeah, you can do this, you can have this.
This means a person can go up there, and it's fine. If it was, if it was dangerous, or if they couldn't get up it, they wouldn't be granting it.
I spoke to somebody on the wheelchair, and he said that it would be challenging for him to go up and down this...
Well, we can, if you want to go, you know, like, check, ask every person in a wheelchair if this is gonna work or not, I mean, maybe the one, if it's stretching out six feet, maybe we should go out to the sidewalk, if we get a few more comments on people, this is ridiculous. First of all, we wasted tons and tons of our time, and of your own time, and of the applicant's time, trying, trying to avoid going to the state. Now we go to the state two months after that we, I've identified a problem, and, and they agreed to give a variance once you send the, once you sent this drawing to them, which you've done, so we've wasted two months, and now, and now you're still not happy, now you still want us to go out and, and grant you an easement on our property. Now you still want us to go out and, and grant you an easement on our property, so you can bring the, bring the, the ADA ramp out. That's what you're asking right now.
From what I understand, they, they agreed to give you the variance based on the fact that you sent them this.
Right.
Have you waited for them to answer after they've looked at this? No, you just sent them this, so you have, they, you haven't heard from them since you sent this.
Correct.
So there's nothing, you know, this is on their hands.
Yes.
They've given you the easement, I mean, don't dump this on us.
But you're even saying the variance isn't going to satisfy you.
Because it doesn't help the people.
Huh? No, 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 no.
How can you say that? That's, that's a personal opinion.
People who gave you this variance are experts in this, they didn't do it for the fun of it. This is what they do. You know what, Julie? When you, when you did this two years ago, when you, when we came here, you showed us a drawing where that ramp was in your property without a problem. Somehow or other, you moved it forward, it was on our property, and now it's all, you know, it's like, you know, we're the bad guys here, we're not, we're not.
May I ask a question? Why is the village so opposed to providing ADA access?
The village is not opposed to providing ADA access to anyone.
Don't you dare.
Don't say that, Julie.
I'm just trying to understand the reasons.
No, 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 no.
Here's a, here's a way to understand this. The state is granting you a variance so that it can be ADA compliant.
No, it is not, the variance is not ADA compliant.
So that's European.
A var- no, it's, I think, I understand what you're saying. They're giving you a variance to, to, for your design to differ from what is normally required. And that variance, it has been communicated, you, you have not heard back from them, you have asked for the variance, there has been indication that they are in favor.
Yes.
So the next thing is to wait for the communication from the state?
Right, it's not finalized.
Sorry, right, sorry, the next step was for you to send stuff to the state.
Which I did immediately, I overnighted, I overnapped it, yeah.
And so I would think you now follow up with them.
And Charlotte will hear back from them the same way she did when she read originally. And this, this is not us, and this should not be coming before us. You've got, you've got approval from the state, and that's where it is.
So when the village has the power to enable an easement.
Let's go back to power, when, the person that had the power was you. You and your architect, no, 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 no.
I do not have power to say.
You had the power to design something that was accurate. You had the power to go and the responsibility to go to the boards with, with, with information that matched all, that was consistent with each board. You did not do that. It was in your power to create, to, uh, to fix this problem when you came upon it two months ago or whatever, and you just, you decided to go ahead, you said it was a.
No, no, I was working with Ms. Charlotte.
I don't care who you were working with, this is your responsibility as the architect, and you failed at it. And people fail at it, and that's fine, but it seems like you'll throw everyone under the bus but yourself on this. You were the one responsible, you were the one that should have, two months ago, said, ah, I screwed up or whatever, let's see how we can fix it. Two months ago, you could have went and you should have asked for a variance. We've told you three weeks ago to get a variance, and you still didn't, until Charlotte, to her credit, went and asked, what, what has to happen, how does this work? And she got the forms, from my understanding, and actually gave them to you. You didn't even take the initiative to do that. And then it comes back like, oh, the village is so horrible, poor Mrs. Bourbon can't open up her place, and it's the village, the mean horrible village that's doing this to her. It's not our problem, you could have fixed this, it is now, can be fixed, and you're still arguing for, to take more time on this. This is the end of it. We are not giving anything or any time of easement until we hear back from the state, and the state says, absolutely not, this isn't going to work, this isn't ADA compliant, this variance won't work, this won't satisfy what we, what we require. And that's it. That's, there's no further discussion here. When you hear back from them, that's fine. But I'm not, I'm not entertaining anymore, and I don't want to hear about the Civil Disabilities Act, or civil people's.
Federal law.
Civil, right. Okay, and we're not doing anything to stop civil law. What we're actually doing is accommodating according to what the state is allowing us, so that this will be appropriate for what's needed for an ADA compliant. The state's granting it, so the state's, you're now saying the state is, 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 uh, you know, breaking federal law. It's late, I, I can hardly talk, I'm just, I just can't believe where this is going. I can't believe, I thought tonight it would be like, we're waiting for this, and, and, and this looks good, and we can finally open up, and Laura can finally get things going. But instead, we're throwing more of the owners back on the village, and we're the bad people. I'm not a bad person, I'd do anything for Laura, and if I was her representative, or I was her contractor, or I was her architect, I would have fixed this two months ago. I would have started fixing it. But instead, we write, and we draw, and we bring all kinds of plans on, but we never went to the state. We go to the state, and a week later, they're saying, fine, well, grant this, you don't have to go through a whole, you know, through a full board, we can go through it a very shorter process if you send us this. And now we're arguing tonight that you still want something, that we're, that we're in the wrong.
Because the state still encouraged us to work out an easement.
Well, why don't you wait until you get an answer from them, in order to proceed? Because it's not, I mean, I don't think there's anything, there's nothing that we can give you right now, you have to wait for that. So I think that's clearly the next step, and I, I would highly suggest that we.
So Julie, who in the state?
Calm it down and end it there.
Neo Collier.
Say it again?
Neo Collier, C-O-L-L-I-E-R.
And what is his position?
He is the Hudson, uh, I'm sorry, he's a Hudson Valley, and I think was just a representative, I have his phone number.
So he's county, he's not state?
He, he works for the, the state, but they have different regional representatives.
But he's not the one that Charlotte had talked to?
I believe it's, he's the person.
So he told Charlotte, not a problem, he told you that this is a problem, and you need to go back to the village and get the land?
No, he said he will give us the variance as soon as he, as, received our documents.
Yes.
But he still encouraged us to work it out, because obviously one to twelve slope is better.
So, so he's telling one thing to Charlotte, and he's telling a different thing to you?
You can call him, I don't know why.
Well, I don't, but, but essentially, what I agree you're saying, is he told Charlotte, not a problem, and he's telling you, hmm, this is only good.
So the correspondence that will come back from Mr. Collier, or the appropriate person in the office, should confirm the next, the state's approval or not, right? So we should wait, when you hear back from the office and you have a document, that's something we can respond to. Tonight, we can't do anything until we have confirmation of the variance or not. Alright, alright, thanks.
So.
Approve the bills.
I make a motion to approve batch number six one seven three, in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty-three cents.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approval of minutes, eight, or August tenth, two thousand twenty-one, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye. I'm, I'm sorry, I can't, are these, both of these, I read the minutes, but I'm confusing which ones I was present, and which ones I was not, there's one I can't vote for. Oh, it's eight three, no, we're done, we're good. Aye. Aye. I was at both of those.
Dave, August tenth, you were absent, so you can't make the motion to approve it.
Okay, sorry, someone else.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from August tenth.
Second.
Tweet says it.
All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain. Um, I'll make a motion if I'm able to, I'll make approval of minutes.
Oh, wait a minute, I was listening here, I was there. Let's look at the minutes.
No, you were.
You were at the ten.
You were at the ten.
I wasn't at the twelve.
I will tell you in a minute.
Sorry.
I'm confused.
I'm sorry, I thought I was the one who was missing from one of them.
No, Tweet, you were not at the seventeenth. I think everybody was at the twelfth. I didn't, I didn't write anybody down who was missed.
Okay. Thank you for answering. Eight twelve, yeah, we're all there.
Everybody was there on the twelfth.
That's all in pain.
So I will make a motion to approve the minutes on eight twelve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Um, before you do that, can we put on the, um, can we, can we schedule a meeting for next Thursday to discuss the comments that we received tonight on seventy-six and one thirty-four?
Next, next Thursday is the sixteenth, right?
It's next Thursday.
It is the sixteenth, and. Yes, I can.
I.
I'm good.
Double check, I'm not sure. Sixteen, so. And we'll also need a, a resolution approving the three chapters from tonight, so that we can get started with the annotation.
We'll have those for next Tuesday.
Yeah.
Next Thursday, what time, six-thirty?
Can you do it Thursday night, for Thursday night? Okay, next Tuesday, next Tuesday, that gives us more time.
No rush.
So the next time.
Well, the others all get out, right, they, they're going out tomorrow?
Right, yeah, so the, the, the three that were viewed tonight, with no comment that are going, that are ready to vote on are noise, signs and placards.
No, not, no.
No, not.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, signs and placards, subdivision of land, and unsafe building, we're looking again at noise and zoning. And I will, I will send the question I wanted to ask tonight, I will send an email and copy you all.
Oh, we're going to say, hey, what's?
Um, I'm, what I was wondering is what, how, how they, how they feel between the, the code they have been working with and the version they've put forward now? Are they, are they comfortable with they, they being the existing zoning board members who are applying it?
But they, they're not putting it forward.
I know they're not putting it forward, but I'm asking, it seems, it seems as if it is, my, my impression of their response was that it seems workable, as is, as an, and is an improvement over existing. And they're suggesting further improvements beyond.
Yeah, I mean, my thoughts of what Donald said would be, a grant would be phenomenal for something like that.
Yeah, right.
Sorry, what?
My thoughts of what Donald said would be, a grant would be phenomenal for something like that, and that's something a couple of years down the line.
Oh.
So this particular, this particular version.
So we're making incremental progress, I, I think that they were assessing incremental progress.
And I think the.
Quick question, Nick?
Yes.
Is there a deadline for comments on the, the two chapters, and they're still open, or is that?
We don't have a deadline, we're leaving it open till.
The next meeting, which would be next Thursday.
Thank you.
And then decide then whether to close it. If we make substantial changes, then we're going to have to, we'd have to open it up again, so there's no sense in closing it.
Right.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.